Tonight's meeting, the audience is welcome to ask questions, share insights on the committee, the whole agenda items as they're being presented. Please raise your hand, we'll recognize you and I'll recognize you. You're asked to come to the microphone so that everyone can hear your questions or your idea. We ask everybody to keep your comments focused on the agenda item being considered at the time. Ms. Olson is excused for this evening and we'll do a roll call vote.
Present.
Here.
Present.
Here.
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 Thank you. Can we get a motion to approve the agenda as written?
I can make their motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have a discussion and action item tonight to consider the EFT Tours fundraiser money distribution that needs to be addressed tonight due to time sensitive.
I will, yes.
All right, thank you, thank you.
So, as many of you recall, there was a group that was scheduled to take a trip, a tour through Europe through the EF Tours company. And that trip was arranged prior to COVID hitting and the group members did some pretty significant fundraising, also putting their own money down as deposits on the trip. Board members, as the memo from Mrs. Nelson indicated, you have some members who have graduated now because that trip's been pushed back over a couple of years. And they have until the day after tomorrow to get their money back that they've paid. And there are a couple contingencies within that. Students that have graduated, are over 18, have the ability to be part of some tours offered by the same company for a variety of destinations, but they'd be able to travel on their own. And I'm going to look to Mr. Scher's here because I think there was a late change. Are those tours still available, Mr. Scher's? Yeah.
I have no idea. But here's the thing, they've, prior to the information you got, they canceled the trip completely. So, all the money that was raised is what we're talking about now. And if you're referring to the voucher situation, there would be an opportunity, from my understanding, that they'd be able to take another trip associated with that same company over the next year, I think is how long the voucher lasts.
Okay, thanks. Yep. So, yeah, so the trip, the trip that the crew from Spooner was going to take is off. Now, if they are 18 years old or older, they can take a trip on their own without a chaperone. You know, what's at issue here is there was a lot of fundraising that took place for this trip and really no fault of the students that they couldn't take the trip. So, the recommendation is that with the short time that they have left, if they, the students would be able to receive the designated fundraising money that they had earned for the purpose of travel and be issued to the district office on request. And then, of course, students and families will have to make the decision whether they would take the travel voucher from the EF Tours company, which I believe they'd have a year to use that voucher or to cancel and get their money back. And again, that would have to occur no later than the 9th March. So, we typically do not distribute fundraising money, but again, this was money that was raised for the purpose of travel. And although that tour may not be an opportunity for students that have moved on, certainly there's an opportunity for all kinds of travel other places. So, that's the recommendation.
Do we need a motion?
Yep.
I will make that motion to approve the recommendation.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion?
So, I was just going to clarify, so we're approving that the office would pay out the vouchers to the students.
Two parts.
Okay.
One would be if they wanted to go to the company, they could get that voucher good for a trip for one year for those who are 18 and over for that tour. If they so choose to get a travel voucher from the school because they didn't want to do the tours, they would have those two options. So, we're approving that they would have two options.
They have an option of either one of the vouchers.
Either one, yes.
Yep.
But they're not going to get a cash payout of the amount.
It would be a voucher for travel.
Not a cash payout.
They would get their designated fundraising money paid out to them on request for the purpose of travel.
Not a voucher then, the second option, not a voucher.
Well, no. If students decide that they're going to take another trip, then they can receive that money for their trip.
What I heard down on, I heard Nathaniel say you've got choice of one voucher or two vouchers, but we're saying one is a voucher, two is cash out.
Yeah.
Okay. So, is that the motion?
Yes.
Any other discussion or questions?
Would there be, would there be a concern as far as how the funds were raised to take and turn it into a cash out? I don't know where the funds came from that were raised. You said funds have been raised. That would be the question. If I'm a donor and the funds didn't go to what I was donating to, how should we handle that?
Fair question. So, I think the fact that it would be issued to the students for the purpose of travel, that would be, you know, that would be in line with the purpose of the fundraiser to begin with and very unique circumstances with COVID making it such that, you know, these students weren't able to take the trip during their high school time.
Do we know where some of those funds even came from? Would we know if a student were to go out and raise funds, would we even have known that?
There were a number of events that they worked at. We'd know the events. We wouldn't know who the individual contributor was working.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Then we will do a roll call vote.
Benson?
Yes.
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 All right, motion passes. All right, we are moving on to presentations. So, student, staff, and community recognition. So, we'll call the first one up. Brandon Meister, if you want to come on up. Brandon Meister is a senior at Spooner High School. He's a respectful young man who is involved in multiple sports. In February, Brandon competed in a state wrestling tournament and he brought home fourth place. We want to congratulate Brandon for a job well done, very proud, very, very awesome. Next one is Andrew and Kate Melton. We'd like to recognize you for supporting the Spooner Middle School staff during our extended closure by opening the doors of the Cornerstone Church so they had access to the internet, quiet space to work from while we were out of the building. Staff were able to continue teaching without interruption. We are grateful for your generosity and for going above and beyond to help us. Nominated by Ms. Kees Regan, sorry about that. Brandon nominated by Dennis Scheers. Next one is Carrie Rosmos, Doug and Sophia Line?
Lean.
Lean, thank you, sorry. Both of those. All right. We'd like to recognize you for partnering with Spooner Middle School during our extended closure. You didn't hesitate to allow us access to various spaces at the Spooner Civic Center so we could provide each grade level two days of face-to-face instruction. We are beyond grateful for your community support during our greatest time of need. Thank you for being an important part of our community and positively impacting many people's lives. Well, thank you. We have Peyton Steins, nominated by Chris Berghammer on behalf of Karen Collins. Peyton Steins is a positive role model of the railway, railsway. Her can-do attitude is contagious. Peyton went above and beyond this session by engaging students in lessons related to gardening and science under the direction of Suzie Olson Rosenbush and Kim Bassett. She took on the challenge upon seeing our need for more leaders due to COVID. Peyton truly exemplifies our student motto of excellence. We are beyond grateful for her help and meeting students and goals bring in enthusiasm to hands-on learning for our children. Well, thank you. Thank you. All right, thank you. So, item B, referendum project updates, and I believe that's Mr. Kunkel.
Good evening. Over the past month for the elementary school, we've had a majority of drop ceiling grid has been installed, lighting and diffusers have been set into those grids, all drywall at the addition has been installed, painting excluding some punch listing has also been completed, above ceiling work besides a little bit of low voltage has been completed, and a majority of the classroom and office windows at the addition were installed. Over the next month, we plan to start up the HVAC equipment, flooring in several areas will begin, casework is expected to arrive onsite by the end of the month, majority of the ceilings are expected to be completed, and then we'll be getting select demo at the new restrooms near the gym over spring break. Any questions on the elementary? For the middle school, over the past month, all structural steel at the addition has been set, all brick work at the addition is complete, select demo of EFIS at two locations near the addition is complete, and then mudding, taping, and sanding took place at the Anthol's gym between Professional Development Day and President's Day. Over the next month, roofing is scheduled to start this week at the addition, select demo at the entrance just south of the old gym, scheduled to take place this month, as well as block work to build that entrance back up. Underground electrical is expected to start at the, or be complete within the addition, and then it's hopeful to have concrete floor slab completed and possibly metal studs and roughens by the end of this month. Then the furred-out walls at the Anthol's gym, they're scheduled to be painted over spring break, and we're also hopeful to have the acoustic wall panels installed. Any questions on the middle school? Then as part of the facility bipolar ionization, all those components have been installed at all three facilities. The elementary is now complete and energized. They're moving over to the high school this week, hope to have that done, and then by the end of the month, all three facilities should be up and running. Any question on that scope? I think as far as the update portion goes, that's all I have for you.
All right, thank you. We'll put that, receive that, and place that on file. Then we have the next item, item C, to discuss the Spooner High School auditorium project bid.
Sure. So, I believe I gave you guys a write-up to review. We would look to recommend TJ Electric for that work, vetted through their bid, see no concerns, as long as we don't see too many lead time issues on some of the specialty lighting, it should be a pretty straightforward project. Then we were also about 30,000 low of the original projected budget that was approved prior in a board meeting.
So, you'll look for the board to take action on that at their regular meeting on the 21st, correct?
That is correct.
Are there any questions? Do we have a consensus to move that to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
So, yes, all right, we have a consensus to move that. Thank you.
Think is there maybe a brief budget update? Okay.
Good evening. Going over just the administrative construction budget update for the Spooner referendum. So, our projected budget for the referendum was $16 million. Our original contracts after bid, as you can see, was 10 million, approximately $10 million. The next line item is the approved change orders of 1.35 million. About 45% of that amount was value-added district items that we needed for the scope, and the other half of that was existing conditions and normal change orders for construction. The variance in planned work is at 2.1 million, so that's what we're accounting for. Part of that is for the planning of the projects that are taking place and some contingencies for the work that's currently taking place. So, for instance, the auditorium is in that bucket right there, and that will move towards the committed amount. So, right now, our total projected cost for the additions and all the measures that we've been currently doing is about, well, 13,696,907. So, the budget is looking really good, we're right on track. We are below our at from the beginning of the referendum, from what we estimated for the building additions and what the architects estimated, we're right on track for those construction costs. So, that's really great news. The remaining contingency at this point is 2.3 million. So, in the actual cost paid is, that's what, the invoices we paid to date is about 6.34 million, so we paid about 50%, 55% out so far of the referendum, which tracks about where we are for completion. Any questions on those items?
So, we know that we have some pretty large ticket items, some horizontal work to occur at the elementary school over the summer, like the replacement of the north parking lot, reconfiguring the south lot for bus pickup and drop-off. Are those costs, can you tell us where those projected costs fall in this report?
So, at this time, we've sent that information out for pricing, so we've gotten some pricing back at this time, so we've allocated some of that in the variance where we're projecting. And I believe, Brad, you could probably speak more to what we have left for plan, or what we have left to receive yet for pricing.
So, over half of that's actually in the budget now. It is contracted work with change orders, slightly less than half of that scope that you were just talking about, Dr. Aslan, that is currently in variances. So, that is separate from the true contingency at the bottom.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, we'll put that on file. Thanks, gentlemen. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
All right, moving to item D, the yearly CLC before and after school update for 21-22. Ms. Collins.
Can you see that? Good. There it is. There we go. All right. Um, is it okay, like, in this mode, this format for you? All right, thank you. So, good evening. I am here to give you the update for the 21st Century CLC Learning Grants for Before and After School Program. Right now, our goal is similar as before, improve student achievement by providing enrichment opportunities in a safe, positive, and structured out-of-school learning environment where children interact with peers and caring adult role models. Do two things at once here, let's see how I do. There we go, that's much better. So, at the elementary, this is some really great chats from our elementary program. We are in our third year of our second five-year grant. The numbers above show the difference in attendance over the last three years. So, the first set of numbers right here, 125, was pre-COVID, 57 was during our pandemic year in session, and then 188 is where we're at now. Our average daily attendance are similar then, 49 pre-COVID, 24 average daily attendance during our pandemic year, and currently we're at 59. So, that's awesome because we are right where we want to be with our numbers for our funding tier. We are actually above the required numbers, so that's super, and it shows that the need is there and families are having their students continue to participate. We have added resources and new activities to our programming at this level and greatly increasing the attendance numbers over time. For instance, in the morning, we have Read with Hannah. A local community member is coming with her dog to do reading activities with the students and the dog, and then also physical movement in the gym. We've even had a middle school student volunteer to work with our students. And then we've also have some of our usual activities, WIN, science activities, hands-on activities with local Hunt Hill as a partner. One of our day school teachers is teaching Spanish right now, and she's going to increase that over time. She's going to do three nights starting next session, so that's a great opportunity for students. Partnerships that we have, are working on right now with FFA, with Peyton Steinas, who we gave an honor award to tonight. She has been working with the FFA, Suzie Olson Rosenbush, and our kindergarten academic, our kindergarten teacher who's our academic coach, to provide lessons for students in that area. Hunt Hill Hoops Club, and yes, it's still academic-based. Marshfield Clinic Health System for a social-emotional learning grant is another partnership that we've been working on. Mrs. Bitney is teaching it at the elementary level. We are working towards increasing partnerships post-COVID again. For instance, our public library, the Humane Society, and the nursing home for starters. So, as we get up and running again, that'll be awesome. Our elementary goals, we have 16 different goals. It was a very competitive grant when we wrote the elementary grant. We want to highlight just a few. On this slide, you see, whoops, on this slide, you see that we are working on two different reading improvement graphs here, the student growth percentile in the star reading. The short answer is for our reading scores, due to challenges from COVID, as our principal, Chris Berghammer, shared with you during the last meetings, those challenges are where we were at, and that was reflective in our last set of testing. And then for second through fourth grade reading, they stayed the same since their first testing data. Kindergarten through first in math and second through fourth in math also had those same challenges from COVID. To help bridge those gaps, students are attending WIN classes each night, main focus has been reading at the elementary level, but some math is also contained. Other key goals are to offer STEM, art, service learning, physical activities, and social-emotional learning programs. Increase family engagement in support of student learning. Decrease physical aggression. Increase positive self-concept and positive behaviors, and improve the environment for the students. We want the children to feel like they want to be at school, and so providing after-school activities encourages them to attend. Day school, so it's a win-win. This here is going to share with you about our middle school program. We are in the fifth year of a second five-year grant. We did just submit a grant for the next five years. We are awaiting that grant award. DPI just mentioned last week that it might be in April that we find out. Historically, we find out in June. You will notice the difference in numbers again on the side here. Pre-COVID, we had students enrolled at 145. During COVID, we still saw 85 students enrolled, and then 127 this year. So, our numbers are moving back up for the middle school. Average daily attendance, which is something that the DPI looks at to continue funding, pre-COVID was 48, pandemic year was 30, and we're currently at 36 for an average daily attendance. That was affected by the building shutdowns and the COVID shutdowns. So, we have kept DPI in the loop on that. Programs that we are offering our students outside of the classroom, they are learning outside of the classroom in their interest-based clubs, like cooking, biking, skiing, art, STEM, drama, social-emotional learning, dance, fitness, 3D printing, and more. At the middle school, there is much to offer to the students' voice and choice. Academics are also brought in in engaging ways. And one more. We just want to share our goals that we're hitting at the middle school. Our first goal there, we have less of them, only three, is to increase student achievement in math and reading. So, the short answer, our reading, in our reading, we are almost there, and in our math, we have challenges due to COVID and the building shutdown. Our second goal is to improve student positive behavior conduct, and our third is to improve student understanding of bullying. To help meet those goals, our school social worker, Ashley Valala, has met with all of our students to help meet the two, the second and third grant goals, and we're doing that through a couple of different avenues until she went on maternity leave, until she returns. So, when she comes back, we'll be hitting those again. She does guidance once per week, and our social-emotional learning grant through the Marshfield Clinic Health System. She'll, actually, this year, we got more money for that grant, and we're doing two sessions with middle school students. And then our final goal is to increase family engagement and connectedness. So, we are working on bringing more in-person family events to our schools. We are promoting family education classes with local partners such as UW Extension, Lakeland Family Resource Center, and we are increasing communication with day school teams and families. So, that was quick, in a nutshell, if you have any questions.
Are there any questions?
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. We will receive that and place that on file. All right, item E, discuss district E-Rate funding for the 2022-23 school year, I believe, Miller.
So, the information you have before you is for a project for next school year, which would be updating our wireless system throughout the district. It's funded typically through a grant through the federal government known as E-Rate. We receive an 80% discount on the overall cost of the project. The reason I'm coming to request sooner rather than later is because of our continued pandemic-related lead times and supply chain issues. I want to be prepared to move, to make that purchase for next year when the project is approved by the E-Rate program, so I'm just asking the board to prove, moving ahead with this project as a next year's budgeted purchase as soon as we receive official approval that we received our discounted funding rate for this project. Have questions?
Are there any questions? Yes.
One thing that I noticed on the bid, the bid actually expired or had an end date on there, and I was...
Yeah. What'll happen when the project is approved, we'll have to get a revised quote. There's potential the cost could go up. I've talked with the company, don't see that because their inflationary markup for the coming school year was already reflected in that original bid. If it were to change significantly, we would come back to you guys for approval or update.
Okay. That answers that question. I was just wondering if there was a need for contingency or something put into the bid, but seems like a good answer.
I don't anticipate any significant cost changes, but if there is one, we'll discuss it and we'll be back to it in an update.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Ms. Miller. We'll, is there a consensus to move this to regular board meeting?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
All right, we'll move that. Thank you, Mr. Miller. All right, item F, discuss Kids Hope USA restart, Mr. and Mrs. McKinney.
I'm just gonna, I'm going to say a few words as the McInneys come up and get set up, so, boy, it's nice to finally be in a position in terms of health in our districts and health in our community where we can begin to give consideration of bringing in special programs like Kids Hope USA back into the schools. So, it has been some time since Kids Hope USA has been able to operate. I know some of the board members are new, sense... USA has been able to operate. I know some of the board members are new since Kids' Hope USA was in place, but real briefly, it is a, it's a youth mentorship program. You're gonna hear a lot more from the McKinneys on that. You have a couple of documents that were, documents that we'd used previously when the program was in place, and there are some recommended changes and updates with that for your review. And with that, then I ask you to call on the McKinneys.
All right, McKinneys.
Thank you, Dr. Aslan.
Thank you. So just like Dr. Aslan said, this isn't a new program that we're hoping to see start up here in Spooner. This is something that was operating prior to the COVID shutdown. With COVID shutting us down, we weren't allowing visitors into the building, which eliminated mentors coming in. So essentially what Kids' Hope is, it's a national organization that forms a partnership between a local church and a school district and provides intervention for at-risk students. And as you can see, it has significant data supporting this program that supports educational success, social-emotional competency, and just general additored towards risky behavior in school. So how this kind of lays out and how it operates in the building, teachers would identify students who feel would benefit from the program. Schools would send home a parent consent form, so parents have to consent to having their student participate in the program. Parents return that form, and then at that point, myself, Ryan, and our principals would match the mentors and students based on needs and availability and maybe special interests. We take a lot of things into consideration when making a match between a mentor and a student. Students would meet weekly with their mentor. The program suggests an hour a day, however, we know that time is valuable and hard to get a full hour with students. So that's the goal. An hour a week, I'm sorry. Yes, yes. So whatever is available by the student, teacher, and then the mentor as well. The mentor fills out a daily progress report after each meeting. This just encourages communication between the mentor and the teacher, as well as the mentor and the parents. So there's a lot of communication going home as well. Both Ryan and myself are directors for this program through the Spooner Wesleyan Church. That's the church that saw a need in the district and felt like they wanted to help and support in whatever way they could. And we, prior to COVID shutting down, had roughly 25 mentors that were serving both our district as well as Shell Lake. So we had mentors in both districts working with students. Ryan and I both provide the training and the support, and then the evaluation to the mentors. So Kids' Hope puts together a nice packet of information, as well as the training, that each mentor has to go through. All of the members are regular attenders of the Spooner Wesleyan Church. They have to fill out an application process, including references. They have to pass a background check that we do here through the school. They have to interview for the position, so we meet with each of the mentors to do a vetting process. They also have to attend that training night. There's a video training, and then an orientation at the school before they can meet with any student. Yeah. Do you want to talk about the next part? Mentoring hour? Okay. So again, it's, the idea behind it is just encouraging that relationship. We have a lot of information that was given to us through Kids' Hope as far as like, how can you build relationships with students? These are just a few examples of what they can do. Face charts, books about me. We have a lot of materials that they can be using. A lot of planning and collaboration done during the hour. This can be used as an academic time as well. So if the student has academic needs, a portion of the time can be used for academics. If the, if the teacher has work that maybe they need to catch up on, or they have an identified area that they could use support in, it can be used partially for that. The other part is for the student to develop a relationship with a positive person. So playing games, doing puzzles, reading books, things like that. One area that came up for discussion, the first time that we met with the board, was the separation of church and state, and Kids' Hope has recognized that. They support that. A part of the training discusses that with the mentors. Mentors aren't there to pray with the students. They're not there to encourage any religious practice with the students. Mentors aren't there to preach about their faith. It's simply to connect with kids. And that is all a big part of the training process.
So that's kind of an overview of Kids' Hope and what it looks like. When the discussion came up with Dr. Aslan about having this program go on for a couple of years and COVID paused and starting it back up here in the spring, what we would look to do in the springtime is simply take the mentors and the students who are both here, and if that worked with those mentors and mentees to meet up again, to start that process here in the springtime. And then if Kids' Hope was reauthorized again, there'd be trainings and recruitment and all that for new students, new mentors to come in at that elementary level. So we did, we did some matching up. Some students have left the district, but there are a number of students who are here, and their mentors are still around. And those students and their office discipline referrals would say a positive mentor coming each week would probably be a good thing for those kids, too. So that's where we're looking to start up. So with that, what questions do you have?
Are there any questions? Thank you, guys, for being willing to do that. Do we have a consensus to move this to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, moving to item G, to discuss the Iceman Hockey Co-op Agreement Renewal. And Mr. Lucius?
Mr. Lucius.
Thank you.
With all your co-ops that you're involved in, WIA requires you to re-up every two years. Both the boys and the girls hockey co-op renewal comes up this time. I believe in your notes, you see the paperwork from the WIA. Also on there, there was some information that was given to you about the current Iceman co-op. Basically, what you folks need to do is just push it on to the next board meeting for consensus of what we are going to do. Tonight is not the, are we in, are we out, or anything like that. It's just moving it on to the, to the board meeting.
Yes.
All right, just a couple of questions based on what we got. So we surveyed nine of the current Iceman surveyed, but there are a player projection of 17. Why didn't we survey all of them? And I would like to have that surveyed of all of them by our next meeting.
The reasoning behind doing the nine is the ones coming in haven't been in a co-op. How do you ask them what their opinion about a co-op when you've never been in the co-op?
That was my next thing. I think we also have to survey their parents for our next meeting, too. I would like that information.
I have some questions. I believe that as a board, we're at a position where we have three choices. We renew the co-op to continue the way it is right now, no change. We renew the co-op with the hopes that we can use the number of players that we have as a little bit of leverage and move the team, the Spooner as the host team, so that we don't have our 17 players having to sit on a bus, 17 or 19. I'm getting different numbers from two different groups. Is it possible that we could have some leverage with the co-op and move it, tell our team, our, our host rink, we do have a rink in town here?
Yeah. This year, basically, the split was 60-40 and 20, or not 20, but Barron had 60% of the games and practices. Barron, or what did I just say? Barron had 60%. Spooner had 40%. Barron had four home games. We had four home games. Barron ended up with more practices. I do have those numbers for you if you'd like to see them. And then Cumberland ended up with two games also. Discussion today, because we did meet as athletic directors in the co-op, and we talked about it, and that discussion did come around, too, about Spooner possibly being the lead school again. Once again, if you're the lead school, you're going to flip it, and then we would gain to the 60% with Barron being 40%, and Cumberland still. With Cumberland's numbers, it was even talked about with them potentially having only two skaters, instead of two games that they're ranked possibly one. So yes, those discussions have been started. Once again, though, within the co-op, that's not just a decision that we can make. It would be all the districts to decide on who is going to be the lead school. It also was discussed in our meeting today, too, about having that rotating basis of going two years, because some co-ops do that, that have larger numbers. Spooner would be for two years, then Barron would be for two years. And then if Cumberland wanted it for two years, they'd be the lead school. And so those are those things that you could possibly do if you stay in the co-op.
What is the numbers in the total co-op, then? I guess if you're gonna say 17 are Spooner students, how many total players are we dealing with here?
Projected right now, Spooner's at 17. I believe Barron was projecting, from what their athletic director told me today, was 13. You have one student from Chatek, you have one student from Cameron, and you have two from Cumberland. So if you look at that, you're probably between the 30 and 40, all depending upon how many come out.
So you, are you willing to say that we have over 50% of the students on the team are coming from Spooner?
I'm not gonna say that right now until I see the numbers out of there.
With the current numbers?
We had 13 this year. Barron had 13.
Okay, so if we go to 17, we don't know what the rest of the schools would be?
Well...
We don't know.
What I just gave you is kind of what is projected.
I understand. I understand. The other option we would be sitting at would be, the third option would be, we look into a standalone team. And I don't know if a standalone team financially is viable, because I don't know the finances where we currently are at. So I guess, I've been told that two of the school districts have already signed up for the co-op.
Yeah.
They must, they must have numbers that we don't have, then?
If you're going to stand alone, you're gonna stand alone. It'll be Spooner. It'll be Spooner schools. The 17 that I have, the number that I gave you of 17 is what is projected as kids that right now are in the high school program, nine through 12. Students that are freshmen this year that played on the Bantams, that would be eligible to play next year. And then the other number would come from incoming freshmen that would be in eighth grade now, that would be available. So that's where I come up with the 17.
You, you just said that if we do a standalone, it's just gonna be Spooner. There's no option, there's no option to even offer it to Shell Lake, Cumberland, or anyone?
You're already in a co-op.
And they...
They, they don't have until April 1st.
They have until April 1st.
Right. So we do have time to have this discussion right now.
Have any of the other member district school boards acted on the co-op agreement renewal yet?
With the exception of, I haven't heard from Chatek, and then us, the other schools have acted on it, staying in the co-op.
So do they have numbers that we don't have? How did they make that decision? Because I don't know what it's costing us to be in the co-op. I'm still asking.
They have their numbers, is what I gave you. Cumberland is projecting two.
I'm talking about finances, the dollar amount, whether or not we can financially support a standalone team.
Right now, with Barron being the lead school, what we do is we give them all the information, like busing to and from games and all that stuff. They pull it up, and then it comes back to us. I don't believe we have that number quite yet. You could get what it was last year, as far as the payout of what the cost was.
You know, that's where I'm at. I'm having to make a decision here, and I don't know if financially, if we went with our own team, what would that cost us? Could we offer that to Shell Lake and Cumberland, Minon, maybe, who become part of the 17 that we're looking at? And if so, what would our cost be to do that? And if we didn't do it that way, what does our cost continue on where we're doing and bus students back and forth? And that's all. I'm just trying to look at everything before we have to make a decision. And I don't have any numbers. I want the numbers. I want to know, what does it cost to have a standalone team? If you're gonna, whether you have 18 students or 28, I believe that the cost would be the same.
You'd have to go back, and you, you look at your games, and you look at your ice time. Now, I do have the bills, or the district office has what our ice time that we paid in Spooner was. I don't have what the cost of ice time in Barron is at this point. Like I said, those numbers, those numbers are being put together at this time, because then it gets divvied out to the other schools. So in other words, when the season is complete, all the bills go in, and then it gets partitioned out to Spooner, to Barron, to Cameron, to Chatek, by participants on what our cost was. Now, overall cost for what the program was, you know, last year, that number is out there. I know when Shannon used to be the business manager, we had those projected numbers. I don't have those projected numbers right now.
Could we have those before next time we vote?
I, I think we can have some estimates.
Yeah.
I'm really, I'm wanting to do what's best for our students. I'm wanting to listen to everybody and look at all sides, but I feel that I'm not being given everything I need. And I've heard that two of the schools have already signed up to be part of the co-op, but they don't know what the cost is even gonna be before they signed up. And we're looking at going into it with a cost of roughly 50% of the players. So would I be willing to, are we willing to say that Spooner School District supports roughly 50% of the cost of the Iceman co-op?
I would say that if you get all 17 and the numbers are projected, then yes, we'd be about 50%.
So it might be advantageous for us to look at local, to say, based on that number, we could look at that number. Then we could also look at our estimated number over here. And guess what? We can cut down on the transport of 45 minutes each way for our students if we were going this route and invest in our community. So I'm willing to look at both sides, but for some reason, I don't have any numbers to be able to look at that. The fact is that I believe that the co-op is gonna have a different change. I've heard rumors that their ice time could actually go up quite a bit this year, going into this year.
What, what I got from the athletic director from Barron today, she doesn't have that yet.
Right.
That is something that's gonna be discussed. So yeah, they don't, they don't know exactly what the ice time cost will be.
I believe we have a local rink that's willing to actually negotiate and work with us right now, not keep those numbers till the last minute. And I'm willing to sit and talk to them also. Have we talked to them about what the cost would be for a standalone team?
I have the cost of what we were charged this year for our, our practice time and our game times there. That's in the district office.
But that is divided then among the teams, right?
Well, right now, it isn't divided out. That, that was the bill that I give to...
Right, but then we will, we would divide.
Yes, that would be divided out amongst the other teams.
Which could be higher, because they are gonna get more from other schools. One question, Dr. Aslan. So just a point of order in the fact that all the others, the other schools except for Chatek has brought it to their board. A board can rescind that, correct? Before April 1st, or can they not?
I can't, I can't speak to that. You know, their, their process that the host district used this year for re-upping was different in the past. You'll recall in previous years, you had the document to take action on, and districts signed off and then forwarded it and it was consolidated. That's not the way that they're, that they went at it this year. And I don't, I don't know if that's binding or not. I know it's binding once it's submitted. I wouldn't speculate on whether districts can opt in or opt out after they've acted on it.
Okay. Thank you.
Are we, the way you described it, I just want to ask another question. The way you described it is that, does the co-op help pay the cost of transporting our students back and forth?
Not for practices.
See, that's where I'm going at. I'm trying to cut down on A, cost, and B, get rid of that bus time.
Yeah, no, we, busing to practice, we take care of. Busing to games goes into the kitty for the whole co-op.
But, but if we want to have a standalone team, we would also save that cost. We would have, other than...
You're not gonna, you're not gonna bus, but you're also, you know, depending upon what the price of your ice time is.
Right. We need to look at everything. Everything needs to be looked at. And one of the major costs, I believe, is probably gonna be the busing and the ice time. That's the two issues. So the cost of coaches, we pretty much know. The cost of uniforms, we already know. We can figure all that out, but I really would love to see those numbers. And the other topic is, you're, you're saying we're going into 17 based on what your numbers. They're coming up with 19, but I'm also willing to say, let's open it up and, and offer it to Shell Lake, Cumberland, maybe Minon, if they have students that would want to dump in. What would be wrong with us saying we're gonna be the host co-op?
I think, I think you'll be out of the window of time for forming a different co-op. That, that's why...
Part of it's because we waited, we were just trying to get documents together and numbers, and that's where we're not getting anything. And that's where I'm really frustrated. I'm willing to listen to everything, but I really want to know those numbers, because I'm looking at a standalone team. You know, we're looking at 19 going into next year, according to what they're saying. It's possible we could get more students from other districts. other districts. Then we're looking at the following year, we're looking at 20, then up to 25, based on what they're saying.
Right now, if you, if you looked at, if you brought Shell Lake, and I don't believe Shell Lake has got a high school skater at this time, Cumberland's sitting on two students that are in the program. There's one that's currently, that'll be in 11th grade, and there's a ninth grader. So basically, your numbers, you'd add two more, two more players.
Because that, that, when I'm looking at my cost, what I'm going to say again is that whether you have 19 players or 29, I believe our cost for a team is going to be the same, pretty much. You've got coaches, coaches, certain amount of ice time, certain amount of practice, and certain amount of games. So we, we should be able to put a number together and say, this is what it would cost us to have a standalone team based on these hourly rates for ice time. And that's where we got to figure, the hourly rate for the ice time is a big one. And, and it's a big factor. And we seem to have a community that's really behind our ice that we have in town here. And it's like, we should look at it, take a really good look at. And without numbers, I can't make a decision.
So not being asked to make a decision tonight, other than consensus to roll this forward to the regular meeting for consideration. And as we indicated, we'll get those cost estimates out to the board members, so you can have a sense of what, what current costs are with the co-op and what estimated cost would be with a standalone squad.
And we can do the...
Thank you.
You're asking for the parents of all, you want all 17?
I do.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's important.
I agree with that. And I think the incoming freshmen should be part of that. They're the ones that are going to be playing their career from the start to finish. I, I understand why a, a current player that's already involved in the co-op doesn't want to...
Right, I do understand.
There's a bond here. There's a, a team, there's a bond, and I understand it. I, I agree with that. But going into the future, we, we've got to look at on the road too.
Okay. You still, you have a question?
You can do it.
Question or, or comments, if you want to come up, I believe.
Yes.
Yep.
Questions or insights?
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Carrie Ramses, President of the Spooner Area Youth Hockey Association. To address the question that's being asked, the Spooner Civic Center is prepared to give you numbers that you would need to make that decision, once you balance it out with what you have. What has happened in the past two years at SEHA, and the lumberjacks have been managing the Civic Center, is that the co-op has not come to us and asked us to negotiate any of the ice times. So what you have been being charged is a standard rate that we charge anyone. So when we do talk about numbers, we would be happy to negotiate a fair rate. The business plan of the Civic Center does not hinge on the high school team being here. Obviously, it hasn't. And so we're able to negotiate, and we'd love to have the high school team here. As far as the numbers that you're pointing out, the 19 number that you may have been given at some point, Mr. Johnson, is because there are two players who have played previously. Their families have chosen not to play, or the kids have chosen not to play because of academics, or they just don't want to travel that far. So there's a possibility that they would come back. I'm not saying that they're going to come back for sure. And just like Mr. Lucius says, you never know until you actually register if you're going to have the 19 or the 17. And then the question that, if it's appropriate to ask you, is, the question that I have for you is, what are you going to do as a school board and as administration? If we don't go standalone in this next two years, how are you going to keep people wanting to come into Spooner hockey and the youth players to come in? As you know, we just had a great weekend. We won the state championship for the youth, and it's 10U. So you might think, well, 10U, that's like third grader-ish. And what does that have to do with our high school team? Well, I can tell you that I've had conversations with at least four families that are in that 10U group, that important is, hockey is important enough to their family that they're already considering where they should go. And these are personal conversations I had, but they're truthful. I'm being truthful with you that those are conversations that are being had even at that level. So that was my question that I would ask to you and to the administration. If you choose not to, what are you going to do? There's people behind me today that are coaches, that have been on the SEHA board, someone who has Iceman members. And so if you have any questions, do them please, you know, ask in this form or ask later. We take any questions. Last thing I'll leave you with is, I totally would agree to do your own survey, because you need your own information. But we did do a survey. We surveyed all of those parents and all those families, and you did get that information last week in an email. Thank you.
Thank you. So if there's, are there any other questions, or do we have a consensus to move this to the next, or to our regular board meeting? Is there a consensus?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Item H, discuss renewal of girls hockey co-op. And I believe, Mr. Lucius, you're back up.
Once again, it's the same. You're on a two-year renewal period with your girls hockey program. No recommendation, or it's just to move this on to the, to the board meeting. You have one player from Spooner that is going up to Hayward for the girls hockey program. Basically, once again, I think with, what Mr. Johnson asked, you have an idea of how costs and everything like that are split and things. So if there's any questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
Are there any questions? Or do we have a consensus to move this to the regular board meeting? Yes?
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Lucius. All right, moving down to item I, discuss early childhood special education teacher allocation of FTEs. And leave Mr. Hopkey.
Glad you did. All right. Good evening, Board. Mr. Hopkey, just to give information on the early childhood special education FTE. Way we've been operating with our current staffing, I know you have the information there, but just going over it, half of the FTE was split between the early childhood special ed teacher position, as well as the other half was the gen ed 4K coordinator. And just to bring you back with the 4K coordinator, that was brought on when we decided to stand up our own 4K program again and bring that back into the district. And having that, that, that cooperative with Head Start required a little extra assistance. And we had new teachers coming in, so we really needed someone to navigate that. I know the caseload over this past year for, for that special education teacher has increased dramatically. And she's spending quite a bit of time working on that caseload. Other things that, that we have to consider as well, for, for our students that are three years old, we do not have a three-year-old program. However, students that have needs currently have to come into the buildings to get services from, from our early childhood teacher. That isn't at the least restrictive environment for some of those students. And that was something that was identified by DPI, that our numbers for some of that restrictive environment is in that area. And we have to do something to kind of plan and work around that identification. And part of this would be trying to get out to either daycares or home environment, which is the least restrictive environment for some of these students. Okay? So what we're looking at, or what we're doing, and just, once again, just giving that information, what we're doing here is, we're going to put that one FTE into the early childhood special education position. And that just provides the opportunity to give services to students with more significant needs in the classroom, as well as those with less, less need to get that instruction in either daycare, home environment, which is that least restrictive environment. Okay? This person would be working with the 4K teachers to provide that inclusive instruction, which I think has that opportunity to increase our students' gains, so they can be more included in their classrooms in the future. Also, what would be, or what's going to happen is that coordinator position would not be required. We're going to have all the 4K classrooms in our building starting next year, so that, that coordination piece with Head Start in a different building is not necessary. Plus, with our teachers, they've been there long enough, they know what, how to handle the instruction piece and do that, do that work. So what, what we, what we're doing here is, once again, just shifting the FTE, and it's not going to be an increase or decrease of FTE in the district.
Is the, who's the administrator responsible then? Would it be the building principal, the elementary principal, or the...
So the, this, this FTE would fall under the special education and would be operating in the elementary building. Yes.
Are there any other questions? All right. Do we have consensus to move this to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Hopkey. All right, moving down to J. Discuss bids for audit services. And I believe, Dr. Aslan.
So we did conduct a request for proposal for audit services, received one proposal, and it is from our current auditor, Lieutenant Alan Larson. So we would, we've got to have an auditor. That's required by law. We'd ask that you reach consensus on moving that item forward for action at the March regular board meeting.
All right. Any questions? Do we have consensus to move that to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
Yes. All right, we'll move that to the regular board. Item K is discuss bids for HVAC maintenance. Dr. Aslan?
So we periodically put the HVAC maintenance out for bid, and did so this year, and received bids from three companies. Jamar, who is your current vendor for HVAC maintenance, Johnson Controls, and Ahearn, who was the maintenance provider before the Jamar company. So you'll see in board docs, kind of a summary document that Chris provided, and we'd look for you to roll that forward, and you'll receive administrative recommendation prior to the March 21st board meeting.
And if you're, that's what those packets are? So those are the three different ones? So you want to look through those if you have any questions?
Ryan, yeah. Ryan's asked that, Ryan Predney's asked that if you do have questions, as you look through those, that you contact him directly, and he'll answer them, or he'll get answers for you.
Excellent. Do we have consensus to, to move that to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
All right, we'll move that to the regular board meeting. Moving down to item L, the 30, 60, 90-day planning. Everybody's had an opportunity to see those. Any questions on those? And we'll receive that, place that on file. Item M would be the financial update. And that would be...
Oops, sorry. Check that. We'll get it here. Thank you.
Here, you want to use this?
Oh, I'm good, Mr. Milton. Thank you. So, looking at finance report for the month of January 2022. And in that, you'll see income of $3,585,920.74. You will see expenditures of $2,612,183.99. Cash on hand at the end of the month, and $1,223,426.76. Important to note that the line of credit that we took out late in 2021 has been paid back. So that was the most significant movement of money during that month.
Thank you, Dr. Aslan. Is there any questions? All right, then we'll receive that and place that on file. Moving down to item N, approval of the vouchers. Everybody's had an opportunity to see those. Are there any questions? Seeing none, do we have a consensus to move that to the regular board meeting?
Yes. Yes.
All right, we'll move that to the regular board meeting. And then the last, we are down to, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I saw move second.
Meeting adjourned.
Good job.
Thank you.